I think Scott, you can start.
Okay, so given the unusual circumstances of the night, I'm a little cryptic where I would assume the chairmanship. So I nominate Commissioner Jennifer Nye to assume duty. Hered of being the planning commission chair for this.
I'll second.
Great, um, I guess we'll do a vote by roll call. We'll start with Commissioner Glenn Winkle.
Aye.
Commissioner Lawler.
Aye.
Commissioner Winter.
Aye.
Commissioner Adams.
Aye.
Aye, and I vote aye as well, so the motion passes unanimously. Um, greetings. Now is the time and place for a meeting of the Beaverton Planning Commission. For the record, I will do a roll call to verify which commission members are participating this evening. We have Commissioner Adams, Commissioner Glenn Winkle, Commissioner Lawler, Commissioner Winter, Commissioner Ellis appears to be absent this evening, as well as, um, our chair. Um.
And.
So are there any communications from commissioners? Yeah, welcome Commissioner Todd Adams. Picked a fun night to join.
I'm part of serving on the planning commission and working with all of you.
Great, thanks. Uh, any staff communication?
Well, you stole my thunder in acknowledging, uh, Commissioner Todd Adams, who was our new planning commission member his first night. Um, he has received some onboarding from staff. Um, but as anyone who has been involved in planning commission knows, it takes a while to kind of get your sea legs. Um, so I just again wanted to welcome Todd and thank you for, thank him for, um, for volunteering for this really important, um, really important service to the city. In terms of other staff updates, and I forgot to introduce myself, Anna Latinsky, uh, planning division manager for the city of Beaverton. Um, I do have a couple of miscellaneous updates. This Saturday, um, is a really lovely summer tradition, which is ten tiny dances. Um, again, it's Saturday, it's at seven PM at the Round Downtown. It's free, um, and it's just so lovely. It's a series of dances on this little four by four foot stage. It tends to, um, uh, draw, uh, really vibrant crowds. Um, so if folks haven't checked it out, I do, I do encourage you to. Um, upcoming, um, events later on this summer, there is the legendary Makers Market, July twenty-sixth, twenty-eighth, which is also at the Round, featuring a fusion Asian-American heritage, um, event showcasing cuisine, crafts, media music, and wellness practices. Um, and then, um, a bit later in August, on August sixth, there is the National Light Out, which, uh, which Beaverton is one of, uh, um, participating cities. Um, and that is going to be from five thirty to seven thirty at Evelyn Schiffler Park. And with that, I will close my comments and let you all get along with the meeting agenda.
Okay. Um, the first item on the agenda is the application for LU thirty-two zero twenty-three dash zero zero six six seven Pointer Road Park. His files C U N thirty-two zero twenty-three dash zero zero seven nine eight, D R thirty-two zero twenty-three dash zero zero six six five, L D twelve zero twenty-three dash zero zero seven nine nine, P D twenty-two zero twenty-three dash zero zero eight zero zero, T P twenty-two zero twenty-four dash zero 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 six five, variance thirty-two zero twenty-four dash zero 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 seven nine, and R P one two zero two four dash zero 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 eight zero. The applicant has requested a continuance to present additional evidence, but has asked that the hearing be held this evening, that the public record be left open, and the hearing continued until August seventh, twenty twenty-four. Under O R S nineteen, er, excuse me, one ninety-seven point seven nine seven, the planning commission is required to grant the request to leave the record open, but has the discretion on continuing the hearing. Um, so commissioners, is there a motion to grant the continuance as requested by the applicant to leave the record open and continue the hearing to August seventh? Just so you know, we will hear public testimony tonight, but we will go ahead and do the motion now. Uh, Mr. Winter.
Commissioners, I move to continue LU thirty-two zero two three dash zero zero six six seven to a date certain of August seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, is there a second on the motion?
I will second that.
Great, Commissioner Winter moved and Commissioner Glenn Winkle seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I, I have a thought. Um, the applicant asks for the record to be, remain open. So I was wondering if we need to specify a schedule for information to be submitted at a certain time and date for the public and the applicant. Is that something we should do?
Uh, Commissioners, Robin McIntyre, Assistant City Attorney. You don't have to do that since you are continuing the hearing, so basically any new information can come in up until the end of the hearing and the time that the planning commission formally closes the record, uh, at the end of the hearing at the date certain.
Okay, so staff will have an opportunity to review the information and provide us with a, an updated report. That's what I'm thinking.
Well, they, they might, they may not have, this may not be a situation where there, this is not the first initial, this is not the initial evidence you're hearing, so there doesn't need to be a staff report seven days in advance as there is for like, for this hearing. So, you know, technically any information can come in up until the time of the hearing and the record is closed. But to the extent staff gets the information in advance, they will prepare, uh, a supplemental staff report for the planning commission.
Okay.
I ju- I just want to chime in here on this Latinsky Planning Division Manager. Um, staff will work with the applicant to, um, encourage, encourage them to submit any additional information enough in advance that staff has the opportunity to evaluate the information and provide commissioners with, um, uh, uh, some analysis of that additional information with enough time for a commission to review before, before that next hearing date. So again, as, as Rob- Robin mentioned, that the record is open, so uh, any and all testimony can be received up until the close of the hearing. However, staff will work with the applicant to help make the continued review of this project smooth.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, then we'll take a vote by roll call. When your name's called, please say aye or nay. Um, Commissioner Adams.
Aye.
Commissioner Glenn Winkle.
Aye.
Commissioner Lawler.
Aye.
Commissioner Winter.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The motion passes unanimously. We will proceed with the hearing tonight with the understanding that the record will be left open and the hearing will be continued to August seventh. Now for the pre-hearing statement. Um, the applicant has the burden of providing that the applications are consistent with the Beaverton Development Code, comprehensive plan, and any development code provisions. Any applicable Beaverton Development Code provisions. The criteria that, the, excuse, the criteria that must be addressed in this hearing are Development Code Sections forty point oh three point one, Facilities Review Committee, forty point fifteen point fifteen point five point C, New Conditional Use, forty point twenty point fifteen point three point C, Design Review Three, forty point forty-five point fifteen point two point C, Replot One, forty point forty-seven point fifteen point one point C, Legal Lot Determination, forty point fifty-five point fifteen point one point C, Parking Requirement Determination, forty point not ninety point fifteen point two point C, Tree Plan Two, and forty point ninety-five point fifteen point one point C, Variants. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards these approval criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that says speaker believes to apply to the application. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the planning commission and other interested parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may pre- preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Anyone who submits comments or gives oral testimony has standing to appeal this decision. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approv- of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue may preclude an action, may preclude an action for damages in Circuit Court. State law, state and local law require commissioners to make certain disclosures. To these ends, the following questions will be asked. Do any commissioners have any actual conflicts of interest, actual or potential conflicts of interest, ex parte contacts, or site visits to declare? I'll start with Commissioner Winter. Or, yeah, listen.
No to all three. Sorry, I kept missing.
Commissioner Adams.
I did do a site visit, but I didn't meet with any of the neighbors.
Okay, Commissioner Glenn Winkle.
No to all three.
Commissioner Lawler.
Um, I have no conflicts or bias, but I do, I have had some ex parte contacts that I'd like to enter into the record. Uh, first of all, I live in the West Slope neighborhood, and my house is approximately a one-half mile from the Pointer Road Park project. And I have had contacts with T H P R D staff over the past few years. Specifically, um, I met with T H P R D administrative staff and board members this spring regarding the proposed name of this park site. I also participated as a board member of the West Slope Neighborhood Association Committee, or NAC, in the public pri- planning processes during the park's two-year design phase, including interactions with the T H P R D de- design staff during open houses and at the neighborhood meeting, which was held February fifteenth at our regularly scheduled NAC meeting. I have not had any contact with T H P R D design staff since that neighborhood meeting. I'd like to conclude that all of the facts I've learned during my involvement and relevant to this review and decision are based on the materials included in the land use file and staff's assessment of the case file's compliance with relevant code standards.
Thank you. Um, and quickly, I will say I, uh, I can say no to all three of the questions. Does any member of the audience wish to question the commissioner about ex parte contact, site visits, or challenge the right of a commissioner to participate in this hearing? Uh, seeing none. Um, let the record show, no response. Um, the order of the public hearing tonight will be as follows. City, uh, city staff will give a presentation followed by commissioners' questions of staff. The applicant will then be given twenty minutes for its presentation, followed by the commissioners' questions of the applicant. Then members of the public in support of the application can speak for up to thr- three minutes each. Then members of the public opposed to the application may speak for three minutes each. And members of the public who are neither in support nor opposed will then have three minutes to speak each. After public testimony, the applicant will have five minutes for a rebuttal, and then the fe- planning commission will then hear final comments from staff. We will now begin the staff presentation.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Brittany Gata. I'm an associate planner in the Community Development Department. This evening, I'll be providing the staff presentation for the Pointer Road Park proposal. It is case file number LU three two zero two three dash zero zero six six seven. Um, and before I begin, I want to call the commissioner's attention to the supplemental memo and two new exhibits that were provided this afternoon. The applicant for this proposal is the Tualatin Hills Park and Recreation District, and they propose to develop a new public park in a residential zoning district. And based on the site design and the existing conditions of the site, the proposal requires seven land use applications. The first is a new conditional use application, which is needed to consider the allowance of a public park in a residential zone, since it is a conditional use. The second is a Design Review Three, which considers site improvements and new structures that are associated with the park. A parking determination is also included, which establishes a minimum required bicycle parking ratio. Um, next is a legal lot determination, and this, this does the research to establish if the, the two tax lots that comprise the site are legal, excuse me, are legal lots or can be established as legal lots. Um, a replat one application would consolidate those two lots. And, um, the last two are a tree plan two for the removal of seven community trees to allow the development of the park. And lastly, a variance application, since the applicant requests a reduction of the required lighting level for onsite walkways from the development code. The public park is proposed on a roughly one point nine five acre site, which is located south of Southwest Pointer Road and north of Southwest Canyon Lane. Um, it is located in the West Slope NAC District, um, and the site is zoned residential mixed C, shown in yellow on this map. The surrounding neighborhood is also zoned R M C and consists of existing residential properties. To the north of the park is also Sunset Highway, which is State of Oregon right-of-way. Um, on this slide, we see the center of the park site, where most of the park's improvements are proposed to be located. Um, I'm going to use a laser pointer to walk us through the key, um, improvements that are proposed. So first, we have a picnic area on the north side of this image, where there's a picnic shelter and some picnic tables. We also have a water play area in this section. Proposed playground equipment here, which is actually going to be further determined at a later date. The applicant has elected to do a future design review application once they have solidified the plans for the playground equipment. We have nature play areas over to the south of the playground equipment and over here as well. And then, of course, we have an open lawn area in this large section. At the north end of the park, we do have, um, six double bike parking racks for twelve total spaces and some more seating areas. And I also wanted to point out that there is, um, a set of improvements located within the right-of-way of Southwest Pointer Road. Um, and there are details in the staff report about, um, staff's assessment of those and, um, additional approvals um, would be required for one of those improvements. At the south end of the site, we have a narrow strip of land. Um, in the report, this is referred to as the shared accessway. It is a twelve-foot wide strip of land that connects the internal park site to Southwest Canyon Lane. Um, and what it does is, um, in this area, there is a vehicle access that exists already, so the project retains that vehicle access and reconstructs it, reconstructs it. It also provides a pedestrian area, which is called an accessway, on the western six feet of the shared accessway. And the development code does require this accessway to be provided in order to connect the park with Southwest Canyon Lane. And I do want to call out that due to the narrow width of the shared accessway, we will have both vehicles and pedestrians using that facility. And since the vehicle portion on the left here is only six feet wide, um, if there are pedestrians present, um, they may be contending with oncoming traffic or traffic behind them accessing from Southwest Canyon Lane. Um, as detailed in the staff report, um, staff's presentation is going to just touch on three core topics, um, in this presentation, just in the interests of time. Those topics are the shared accessway design and staff's concerns regarding pedestrian safety, um, lighting and mitigation of potential livability impacts. So these three topics are associated with the findings for approval criteria of the new conditional use application, the design review three, the variance application, and also the facilities review committee criteria. The first topic is the shared accessway and safety concerns. The existing conditions within the shared accessway are constrained due to an existing access easement and driveways that adjoin the accessway. There's also a narrow lot width of twelve feet and existing and new structural encroachments located within this twelve-foot area. There's an existing stone wall on the eastern side, and new handrails will be installed for ADA compliance, and lighted bollards will also be installed. The scope of work of this project includes demolition of the existing paving of the driveway area and reconstruction of that area to provide the shared accessway facility seen in this image. The proposed design of the shared accessway uses concrete for the entire width of the shared facility. It uses a light broom finish over the accessway, the pedestrian area, and a medium broom finish over the driveway area. There's also thermoplastic striping proposed, which would delineate the accessway area. And as I mentioned, lighted bollards would be located on the western edge of the accessway. Staff is concerned that the proposed design does not create the safest possible conditions for pedestrians, considering that it is not feasible to provide any sort of physical separation between the pedestrian and vehicle areas, and that pedestrians and vehicles will sometimes be using this facility at the same time. Specifically, staff is concerned about paint striping wearing down over time, which would need to be restriped. And the city does not have the resources to regularly inspect the striping and require it to be maintained consistent with the land use approval, which would ensure safe conditions. And second, given the maintenance needs of the striping, staff is concerned that the use of light and medium broom finishes will not provide adequate visual contrast between the two areas for pedestrians and vehicles, especially when light levels are low around dusk and dawn. Because of these concerns, staff recommends a condition of approval, which would ensure long-term safe conditions for pedestrians using this facility. And the recommended condition provides two options for the applicant. The first option is that the accessway and driveway would be constructed of two different materials. An example of this would be an asphalt driveway and a concrete accessway. Or if the applicant pervert, preferred to use one material, the accessway would have to be pigmented and textured. And both options would provide a durable form of visual and textural differentiation to emphasize the pedestrian accessway. So in summary, despite existing constraints in this area, staff finds that the recommended shared accessway treatment options are feasible, and they are necessary to create the safest long-term conditions for pedestrian users. The second topic is about lighting proposed in the park. The proposed park design includes only safety lighting using lighted bollards along that accessway area for safety purposes. No other lighting is proposed in the park. This means that the site does not meet two code provisions, the first being that it does not meet the code's technical lighting standards, which requires a minimum zero point seven foot candle lighting level on all pedestrian and vehicle maneuvering areas. So that would apply in the shared accessway and throughout the park. The second standard that it does not meet is in section sixty fifty-five, which requires that pedestrian pathways are lit to at least zero point five foot candles with a maximum light spill over the property line of zero point five foot candles. So because no lighting is proposed in the majority of the park, a full waiver of both of these requirements is requested um, in those areas, and then within the shared accessway, a reduction of these requirements is requested. And to deviate from these requirements, the applicant has applied for both a Design Review Three application and a variance application. The applicant provided justification in their narrative and stated that operation of the park, operation of a park that is only open from dawn until dusk, and the need to discourage after-hours trespassing within the park is a unique circumstance that justifies the variance and design review through your request to provide no lighting in the majority of the park. And for the accessway, the applicant's narrative stated that there are multiple special conditions that impact bollard, lighted bollard spacing, which has caused gaps in lighting and make it unreasonable to meet the standard fully in this area. Lastly, in regards to the maximum light spill over the property line standard, the narrow lot width of twelve feet and the need to maintain vehicle access requires that bollards are placed next to the property line on the west side. So even though the bollards have shields which minimize light spill, as you can see in this image, the kind of boulder lines outline the extent of the light spill. Even with shades, it's not possible to fully meet the standard, um, at the western property line. So after evaluating staff submitted materials, staff did find that the project meets all applicable approval criteria and the lighting design guidelines associated with their lighting proposal. And lastly, I want to discuss, um, findings related to mitigation of potential livability impacts. This is associated with an approval criterion of the new conditional use application. The areas of the park with the highest potential for conflict between park activity and surrounding residences is in the center of the park where programmed activities will be located, including the picnic area, water play, and playground areas. In these areas, the site design features approximately twenty-five foot wide landscape buffers with dense tree and shrub plantings. That would be over on this west side and over on the east side. This is in excess of the standard, which requires a minimum five-foot wide buffer with one tree every thirty feet and evergreen shrubs in between and ground cover. Privacy fencing that is six feet tall with privacy slots is also included in the design. Staff's evaluation of, of this proposal found that the visual and horizontal separation created by the landscape buffers, including the plantings, the fencing, and the distance between property lines and the potential conflict areas, found that the site design does adequately mitigate the potential visual and noise impacts associated with this high-traffic area. And the last potential livability impact that staff identified was light spill associated with the proposed lighting in the accessway. And as discussed- And as discussed for the previous slide, we did find that the constraints within the shared accessway and the need to provide safety lighting justify justify the light spill as proposed by the applicant and staff has no outstanding concerns about light spill impacts. So in conclusion, we know that this hearing has been continued to August seventh. And if the applicant chooses to submit new information to the record, staff report findings and recommended conditions of approval will be updated as needed prior to the hearing. That concludes staff's presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, do any commissioners have questions of staff? Commissioner Glenn Winkle.
Um, I did not receive the supplemental memo today um, or any other backup documentation, so I haven't had a chance to review that. I was wondering if other commissioners did receive the information? Yes, okay. Maybe I can get with staff and figure out where those supplementals are going for me. Thank you.
Um, Commissioner Adams.
Thank you. Um, they mentioned improvements to Pointer Road. Do we know what type of improvements?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll pull up the site plan and and go through them. Okay, one moment. All right, so um in this left image here, we have um the proposed improvements to Pointer Road. In a nutshell, it is this um accessible parking space, which is actually a public accessible parking space since it is located within the right of way. And for the most part, the improvements are associated with that accessible space. So we have some curbing here, we have a low rockery wall to provide stability since there are slopes in this area, the required access aisle here, and some additional striping to ensure there is no illegal tandem parking. Um, the applicant proposes to um reconstruct the driveway access point here. And that would be required to be at a commercial driveway standards unless a design exception was approved later on in the process. And then this area here is a THPRD maintenance uh vehicle maintenance area, which is restricted using a bollard, which is also removable. And this would allow um THPRD vehicles and trailers, if needed, to pull into the park site um, and safely park while they maintained the site. Um, the last improvement is this um wall over here, which is an existing stone wall. Um, and in order to keep this wall, the applicant would need to obtain encroachment agreement um approval from the city engineer uh prior to site development permit issuance. Um, the applicant does intend to keep this wall, however, if the encroachment agreement was not obtained, it would need to be removed um, prior to site development permit issuance as well. So that's the extent of the improvements, um, except for some standard irrigation equipment associated with the planting areas.
Great, thank you.
Of course.
Hey, Commissioner Lawler.
Thank you. Um, would you mind, would you just kind of go over the fencing? Some of it is wooden, some of it is um chain link with slats. And then there was a mention, I believe, of an area that will be uh that will not have fencing. So I was just wondering if you can kind of give us a a broad overview of the perimeter of the property and how it will be treated.
Absolutely. I'm going to pull up a different version of the site plan, just so I can kind of scroll around the site a little bit more. Okay, so here we have mostly the center of the park site. Um, unfortunately can't use my nice red laser in blue beam. So we'll have to try and follow the mouse, but the vast majority of fencing proposed in the park is chain link, which is uh vinyl, black coated with slats. Um, the only area as far as I identified where a wooden fence would be constructed is on this interior south side. There are existing wooden fences and the applicant proposes some sections of new wooden fencing to connect to the existing ones. Um, and as far as I understand, the existing fencing is associated with adjacent property owners that wish to retain their fences, fences, um, so the applicant, um, you know, identifies this encroachment onto their property, but allows it to remain and just connects their privacy fencing to the existing. Um, as far as I know, all other areas are chain link with slats. Um, and the only areas that do not have fencing is along the accessway. So there's just not enough room to provide the required screening fencing um, due to the narrow twelve-foot width. So normally there would be um a full five-foot wide B-three landscape buffer required in this twelve-foot area, but it's not feasible due to the need to retain that vehicle access.
Okay, so the entire area will be fenced?
Yes, yes, correct.
Sometimes it's the existing fence and sometime, and most places it's the new fencing. Okay, all right, thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Do any other commissioners have questions of staff? Okay, seeing none. Um, the applicant will now have twenty minutes to present. Please begin by introducing yourselves and stating your names and address for the record.
Are we ready now?
You are ready.
My name is Nicole Paulson, planning supervisor and project manager for this site uh with Walton Hills Park and Recreation District.
And I'm Catherine Shay. I'm landscape architect with Langgo Hanson Landscape Architects, um eleven hundred Northwest Gleason Suite Three A, uh Portland nine seven two zero nine.
Did you need me to state my address as well? Oh, you're on mute, Commissioner and I.
Uh, I think the city probably has it on record here.
Okay, great.
Uh, you can begin whenever you're ready.
Okay, let me see if I can get my screen shown up here. If somebody let me know if they can see the slideshow.
Yeah, we can see them.
Okay, great. Wonderful. And I'm just gonna move one slide to see if it works. Can you see that that moves?
Yes.
Great, okay. Uh, well, hello, planning commission. Thank you for having me again. My name is Nicole Paulson, THPRD uh planning supervisor and project manager for the future park at Pointer Road. Uh, as mentioned, I'm joined here by our design consultant Catherine Shay of Langgo Hanson. We're excited to present this project here for you today. Uh, so to start off, in two thousand eighteen, THPRD completed our vision action plan, which really created um, our overall park and recreation goals. And this was shaped by input from over ten thousand community members all across our district. Um, our largely our decision-making um really tries to revert back to our vision action plan and making sure that we are balancing resources and needs across the entire district, uh, including uh Aloha, Beaverton, North Bethany, South Cooper Mountain. Um, our goals include being welcoming and inclusive, providing play for everyone, that our sites are accessible and safe, as well as preserving natural spaces. So as Brittany uh showed you the location of the site of it, the future neighborhood park site is located in the northeast quadrant of the park district. It's just hot south of Highway twenty-six, near the Sylvan Canyon Road exit. Uh, that inner ring that you see represents a half-mile radius or roughly ten-minute walk. And while that outer ring shows a one-mile radius or about a fifteen to twenty-minute walk. Uh, the site is surrounded by some really large pedestrian barriers, including uh Canyon Road to the south, Walker Road to the east, uh Highway twenty-six uh to the north. And there is also a major pedestrian route that runs along Pointer Road uh in front of the site and continues west through to our Ridgewood Park um, and then further onto the Sunset Transit Center. So you may have seen this path as you drive along Highway twenty-six. This particular area within our district is in need of park and recreation services. So the future site is approximately two acres with a scattering of trees throughout the site. And a a single-family home did reside on the property that has been removed. And this aerial view really highlights its unique characteristics and and uh unique shape site. The main entry is going to be along Pointer Road to the north with an uh pedestrian access point off Canyon Lane to the south. And the photos on the right side uh of the slide kind of show what the existing site looks like right now. So this project, as Commissioner Lawler mentioned, we've had a couple of years of project uh community engagement. And so throughout that community engagement engagement, staff engaged over three hundred community members, including neighbors, families, kids, teens, and all different ages in workshops um in for the future concept plan. And so we also offered community surveys, recordings of meetings for neighbors who couldn't make the event. Um, and this input really helped guide the drafting of today's preferred concept plan. The community engagement included three virtual meetings, two community events, three community surveys. And not included in the slide that you see here is the numerous meetings that we've had with adjacent neighbors, as well as attending five NAC, West Slope NAC meetings to discuss and present the project. So here is a slide showing our first community event. We kicked our project off uh first with the virtual meeting and then we held an event uh to develop the preliminary concept plan. We had a lot of fun. It was in April of two thousand twenty-two, celebrating the park and enjoying a really dry but soggy uh coffee date with the community. We brought in a coffee, a barista, and treats. We also had an online survey that was available for folks to, for folks to take who could not attend the event. The event actually had about a hundred and fifty people within the community. This was a no-parking event, so this was a walk-to-site. A hundred and fifty people in this community. It was a really great turnout for us, so we were excited to see that. And the purpose of that event was to gain an understanding of what type of activities the community would like to see in the area, uh what type of theme they be interested in and how this base might be used for the community. So this graphic highlight that you see is really um a summary of what we heard in the area. So the community seemed really excited about opportunities to gather with friends and family, as well as play opportunities, places to relax, rest, meditate, and read. Um, amenities or comforts that we heard were having that open lawn space, shaded space, either uh shelter, trees, as well as pathway and connectivity, um, as well as nature and water play. And these activities and amenities were largely consistent with the request to have a more natural theme in the park, including pollinator plantings, native plantings, community uh or gleaming gardens, and uh really working with plants and birds and animals. So with the information we gathered from that first workshop, as well as the online survey, um Catherine, along with the the rest of her team, created three bubble diagrams to illustrate the various activities on the site. And that was uh for our second workshop. And these three layouts were presented also via survey as at and at our park Parktober event, where we hosted a carnival atmosphere with games and crafts over at the West Sylvan Middle School, which is just really close by. Um, these really provided uh layout opportunities to see how um how many amenities people might be interested in, what types of amenities. So from this um community event, option C was the most preferred, which has the most amenities on the site. The site actually, um, the event had, excuse me, the event had roughly eighty people come through that, and then we had survey results as well. So we've really moved forward with uh the information we received at our first workshop and our second workshop to balance the community's desire to have a wide variety of amenities and play while still keeping the site natural and theme and relaxing or restful. We also had feedback from our internal design team um and site considerations, which uh included slope, health of existing trees, uh as well as being nuisance uh on the city's nuisance list, the access to Pointer Road marking the main point entrance, noting also that Pointer Road doesn't have parking on the site. Um, the street frontage noting that Pointer is a bike pathway uh that we want to take into consideration. And again, that parking. So neighborhood parks are not programmed in such a way that requires parking. They are designed in small um, it kind of compact spaces to allow for walkability through the community, and that's just what this design does. Um, we, while we do not have parking, we do want to make sure that our sites are accessible and therefore we have provided the one uh ADA stall that allows um access for folks experiencing disabilities. Canyon Lane has that narrow access, as Brittany had mentioned, and we'll go over some more, um, as well as making sure we're reducing to uh impact to any adjacent neighbors by providing buffers that are greater than what's required for the majority of the site. So Brittany showed a great image, uh aerial view of the um accessway that we have here uh on the right side is an image of that accessway and how it it really is quite narrow. Um, so we do have private access easements on Canyon Lane to a few adjacent uh people um near adjacent to the park. And and uh the design here in front of you really retains access to those easement holders. And there is one easement that we are working to adjust, which uh relates to why we asked for a continuance. Um, and from here, Catherine, I'm gonna turn it over Catherine to uh highlight the different amenities found within the design, including this accessway.
Thanks, Nicole, and thank you commissioners for the opportunity to present this um exciting project from working on this for a while. So it's good to finally be here. So as uh Nicole said, we we are, we've done a lot of work to try to balance the need to of park access on this um shared accessway um with the needs for neighbors to access the site for their uh parking, their own personal parking. Um, so what we have proposed, um, as as uh Brittany said in her staff um comments is a um concrete accessway with uh with a painted thermoplastic um pedestrian route on the west side, including light uh bollard luminaires. And uh different texture pavement on the right side for the east side. Um, it is our opinion that uh THPRD maintenance, THPRD maintenance will be at the site once a week. And um we believe that THPRD can more adequately maintain this um painted surfacing um over the long term than it than it can with a um either a different materials, for instance asphalt, or um a different colored concrete. Um, THPRD believes this will be, they can maintain it more consistently long-term. Um, so that it's, it maintains its safety over the long term. So we would like to, we would like to ask for a uh modification, if that's the right term, um, from the conditions of approval for this specific um condition of approval. Uh, let's go to the next slide. Uh, so just a quick, we've covered a lot of this already, but um all the pathways within the park will be concrete or all the main pathways in the park will be concrete. We will have a few soft surface paths. Uh, I don't know if you can present those, Nicole. Up 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 there at the north end where we have our gleaming garden with uh fruiting plants. Um, another down kind of in the central area around the uh nature play area. And then a small um natural trail, which is called Nature Exploration Trail, yep, right there. Um, that goes through one of our natural areas. Next, please. Um, and again, our gleaming garden is up at the north end, so we'll have a couple of apple trees in particular. A a variety of uh fruit bushes um and a variety of um evergreen herbs. And so these are, these are meant so for anyone to come and pick, um, anybody who wants to. And so that's, it's meant to be a real amenity for the community, um, in the spring, summer and fall months in particular. Next, please. And again, as, as Brittany pointed out, we do have a, a small picnic shelter, twenty, twenty foot by twenty foot open sided picnic shelter with, um, both ADA and standard picnic tables. This is located, uh, just adjacent to the play area so that families can gather and watch their kids play while they're having a picnic or something. Next, please. For water play, um, we are proposing a system of, uh, raised troughs, basically. So this isn't like a, a sand water play. It's not a splash pad. Um, it's just a series of troughs so that kids can play and move things around and open gates and, and so forth. So it's, it's fairly small and, and contained. Next, please. And then, uh, play equipment. We've been working with, uh, one of our local play equipment representatives, to come up with some ideas for playground equipment. And as Nicole said, we are working to finalize the design for that. Um, so these are some examples of what the play equipment might look like. Um, and so that's what you see kind of there in the center of the park. Next, please. And then nature play, this is intended to be kind of, um, more exploration than, uh, built-in equipment. So, you know, provide groups of sticks or, you know, little logs to climb on. Um, but it's not meant to be like a full built place structure. Next, please. And then of course, open lawns. We have, we have a number of areas of open lawn, but one larger area of open lawn, um, that can be used for any number of purposes, picnicking, playing, you know, playing a little bit of soccer or something. Next, please. And there you have it. Uh, so we would be glad to answer any questions you might have for us.
Okay. Do any commissioners have questions of the applicant? Commissioner Glenn.
Hi, I was having some technical difficulties. So I apologize if you went over this and I missed it, but on the shared pedestrian access, is that road just for maintenance vehicles or is that public vehicle access to the park?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, so I'm going to turn my head to the side so I can see my screen. But it, it is a private access. It's a private drive. It is not meant for, um, public vehicles. However, there are some property owners that do have adjacent access to the site and they have an easement that runs, does run through the site. And they can utilize, if you can see my laser pointer, they can utilize this area right here. There will be a gate that, uh, a, a gate and then a fence that runs along this maintenance drive to essentially separate it and buffer it from any vehicles that may need to use this accessway. So pedestrians will not be able to, um, utilize, uh, the hatched area that you see here on the plan, and it will be protected with a gate. So pedestrians really will be moving through, uh, here into the park, into the interior pathway system of the site. Okay, so.
Can I also just jump in and also say that we will provide signage and, um, both signage and, uh, painted lettering on the ground, um, at the entrance to the park at Southwest Canyon Lane to, to say that this is a private drive and there is no public vehicular access to the park.
Okay. I was curious because at the Pointer Road, um, entrance, there's going to be a bollard. So that only, you know, maintenance staff can get in there. And I was wondering why there wouldn't be a bollard at the other, the driveline. But if the neighbors need access for their easements, then I guess that's why the bollard is impossible. That's too bad. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, do other commissioner, uh, Commissioner Lawler?
Yeah, we've heard from a, uh, we've had a couple of letters submitted into the record about, um, some of the development, the developed aspect of the property, of the park property. I was just wondering why, um, or was there a reason why you put the active, um, parts of your park in the narrow part and left the, you know, the big part lawn area? I mean, you know, as opposed to flipping those two. Is there, is there any, um, site constraint that would, um, that, that basically led you to concluding that the active area should be in the more narrow part of the park?
Yeah, it's a really great question and I'll touch a little. And Catherine, if you want to jump in, you're more than welcome. Um, Terry, this really revolves around, um, uh, what we call CIPA design standards, which are really working with security and sightlines when we actually design our park sites. Um, so a couple of reasons, one, having frontage access. That is typically where you want to have most of your play amenities. Um, also, if we're driving by and have any type of, um, just want to have eyes on the park or want to see the park, a parent wants to see kind of down, it provides a really nice, um, sightline amenity or kind of a sightline visual, uh, rather than being tucked behind, um, the houses. We, uh, so, so that really lends itself as well as the topography lent itself a lot better to be within this area. And it's consistent with the idea that the existing single-family residence was right there. Typically, uh, you know, it, it's a good buildable area.
And I think the other, the other aspect, um, we, we couldn't put it too close to Pointer Road because we're even, it's even narrower there. Um, so this, where we have the play areas is kind of the best intermediate place between, um, needing to, to provide that area, but also provide safety and enough of a buffer.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'm curious, the, um, the, again, the lighting proposed along the, um, Canyon Road access, Canyon Lane, excuse me. Um, it said, you, the, um, I think the conclusion was it was technically difficult to have a more lighting, but lower, um, you know, lower level lights, if that's right, whatever, not as powerful, whatever, not spilling over onto the neighboring property. Could you explain what that, what that means and why you ended up going with your proposed kind of compromise position of having fewer bollards and brighter lights?
Catherine, I will let you speak to that.
Yeah. Um, so yeah, this, this has been a difficult, um, a difficult nut to crack, if you will. This, um, we, we do need to provide lighting for safety, um, to meet city requirements. Um, but because this, there are so many constraints in this area, it's so narrow, there's so much other things going on. Um, we're really limited to what kind of luminaires we can provide. Um, and then those luminaires are also limited to what, what they have for, um, optics. To spread light out. So what we're, what we're trying to do is use the best possible optics that we have, um, to spread light laterally along the shared accessway while trying to limit the trespass onto the adjacent property as much as possible. Um, and so this, the solution that we've provided is about the best that we've come up with. Um, and it's not perfect. There's still light trespass. Um, and it still doesn't meet the city's require, doesn't one hundred percent meet the city's requirements. But it seems to be the best, uh, that we can do to provide light while not providing, not having too much light trespass.
And I, I would just quickly add that, um, the light, the bollards are only up to this point right here. They do not go beyond, uh, onto this maintenance drive. Um, at the community, uh, was, um, very vocal about not having the site lit. Um, and, uh, that is consistent with the park district, uh, kind of our standards for being open only dawn to dusk. Uh, so for us, providing lighting in these spaces because it's not programmed is not something that we typically do. So as Catherine said, kind of the best option to be able to meet city requirements, um, while still kind of, um, looking at impact and livability, uh, as well as safety.
Okay. And, and I think I also remember, uh, reading a comment from a neighbor about, about the lighting along there. Um, I mean, I know a lot of people have driveways with these kind of lights on them. Would you characterize this as being the type of lighting that would be commonly associated with a driveway or is it brighter or big, you know, are they taller or, you know? Um, how, how would you respond to that comment that was made about this? They don't want it to be looking like you're inviting people into the park after dark?
I would say there, I, I, I certainly have seen luminaires like this used for driveways. You know, I think they're probably a little larger than you, you know, a typical driveway might be, but I've certainly seen bollards of this size used for residential driveways in some areas.
And, and will there be sign, there will be a sign out there on Canyon Lane, uh, specifying the hours of the park? I think I, I think I read that. Is that correct?
Our rule sign indicates, um, the park hours, yes. And, and a sign will be located.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions of the applicant?
Uh, if not, I have one. Um, addressing the city's concerns about the, um, shared drive and differentiating the pedestrian area from the vehicular area. Did you consider, um, like additional scoring to create a more visual and permanent, um, differentiation between the two, kind of like a boardwalk scoring on one piece and the existing on the other?
I believe we do, Catherine. Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I think, um, it, we may not have made it clear in the, um, clear enough anyways, but yes, we, we would definitely have different scoring patterns for each side so that, um, the, for instance, the pedestrian side would probably have a tighter scoring pattern, more decorative scoring perhaps than the, uh, vehicular side.
Okay. And I'll let staff ruminate on that. Um, any other commissioner questions or comments before we move on? Okay. Commissioner Lawler, I assume your hand is just still up from before.
I never know when it, when it's raised or lowered, if what it looks like. Anyway.
Commissioner and I, would you prefer that I keep this plan up in a shared fashion or, um, do you need me to stop sharing my screen?
I think you can stop sharing. I think we'll move on to, um, the, uh, public testimony.
Thank you.
Um, thank you for your time. Um, so now we are at the public testimony portion of the agenda. We will call for testimony in groups, starting with those in favor of the application, then those opposed to the application, followed by those neither in favor nor opposed. As a reminder, testimony is limited to the criteria that apply to the application. Now is the time for testimony in favor of the application. For those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the raised hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. Do we have anybody wishing to speak in favor of the application? Okay, seeing, oh, we had a hand pop up. Um, we have Edwin. Um, the commission calls Edwin. Please state your name and address for the record and you may unmute yourself.
Hello, um, Edwin is my son's name. My name is Gavin Campbell and my address is seven three zero zero Southwest Sylvan Court. And I'm speaking in favor of this application because I think that, um, it's very good to have a park in this location where, uh, there are a lot of, uh, very busy roads around us. So having a walkable park is excellent. And I think that the compromises that are being proposed, um, you know, to, do, do a good job of balancing Beaverton's requirements and sort of the unique character of the space.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have questions for him? Okay. We appreciate your time tonight. Um, does anyone else wish to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, um, we will move on to those, um, opposed to the application. Um, a reminder for those being viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate using the raised hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press nine to alert the chair you would like to speak. Would anyone like to speak in opposition to the application? Okay. I'm seeing no hands. Oh, we got one. Um, Kelly Lusk, please state your name and address for the record and you can unmute yourself.
Uh, my name is Kelly Lusk, uh, seven four two zero Southwest Pointer Road. Um, uh, Portland, Oregon, nine seven two two five. I'll just note that, um, I, I wrote my letter in, so it's noted my concerns within the letter. Um, I am currently working with Nicole to, uh, address some of my concerns. And so, um, I, I do think we'll be able to come to a mutually agreeable, um, compromise. So, uh, just, we're working it out. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Um, good to hear. Does anyone have any questions for Kelly? Seeing none, does anybody else wish to speak in opposition to the application? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to the third category, those neither in favor nor opposed. Um, who wish to speak? Um, last reminder for those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate using your raised hand feature in the Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press nine to alert the chair you'd like to speak. Does anybody else wish to speak on the application tonight? Okay. Seeing none, we can move on to the applicant's rebuttal. Now is the time for the applicant's rebuttal. Um, the applicant is limited to five minutes. Please keep your comments focused on the issues raised during the public testimony portion, and please do not provide any new evidence. Not sure that was quite applicable tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, at this time, uh, we don't have any rebuttal to the comments.
Okay. Great. Um, does staff have any final comments?
There are no final staff comments. Thank you.
Okay. Um, with final comments completed tonight, um, the public hearing for LU twenty thirty-two dash twenty-three dash zero zero six, six, seven, Pointer Road Park case files, CUN thirty-two zero twenty-three, zero, zero, seven, nine, eight, DR thirty-two zero twenty-three, zero, zero, six, six, five, LD twelve zero twenty-three dash zero, zero, seven, nine, nine, PD twenty-two zero twenty-three dash zero, zero, eight, zero, zero, TP twenty-four, excuse me, TP twenty-two zero twenty-four dash zero. TP twenty-four, excuse me, TP twenty-two zero twenty-four dash zero 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 six five, variance thirty-two zero twenty-four dash zero 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 seven nine, and T, excuse me, and RP twelve zero twenty-four da- uh dash zero 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 eight zero are continued to a date certain of August seventh, twenty twenty-four. We will now adjourn at seven thirty-eight this evening. We appreciate everybody's participation tonight.